Good evening and welcome to this regular session of the Lakeville Area Schools Board of Education. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members in attendance tonight include Director Kelleher, Director Thompson, Director David Anderson, Chair Baker, Director Dr. Carley Anderson, Director Shin Lee, and the board is joined by Superintendent Dr. Doug Van Zyle, members of the Executive Cabinet, Bill Holmgren, Brenda Albrecht, Stephanie Cass, and Dave Haveman. Thank you, everybody that's in attendance tonight. I do apologize that it's a little warm in here. Please keep fanning, bend your knees. I just don't want anybody to pass out. All right, so we'll start with Superintendent Van Zyle and good news.
All right, good evening. Thank you. Our good news this month, of course, we start out with our Students of the Month. Lakeville Area Schools has a Student of the Month recognition program that highlights elementary, middle school, and high school students each month. Students are nominated by our staff members. We're excited to announce that April Students of the Month are Davanyé Landrum, a 4th grader at Orchard Lake Elementary School, Ariana Duque, an 8th grader at Maguire Middle School, and Alex Ricardo Rodriguez, a 12th grader at Lakeville South High School. Congratulations to those three students. We also have our Staff of the Month recognition. Lakeville Area Schools is excited to have a monthly staff recognition program that highlights staff nominated by other employees. Our Staff Members of the Month for April are Danny Martin, District Wide Instruction and Behavior Coach, yep, go ahead, and Kyle Gare, the AV Technology Support Specialist at Lakeville North High School. Congratulations to both of them. Our Lakeville Arts Students earned recognition at the 2024 Minnesota Scholastic Art Award. Eight students from Lakeville South High School and 11 students from Lakeville North High School have earned various awards at the 2024 Minnesota Scholastic Art Awards. Congratulations to all those award winners. We also have Lakeville Area Schools that maintain a strong graduation rate. We wanted to highlight that. The Minnesota Department of Education released data on March 28th showing that the district's four-year graduation rate remained robust at 93.7, which is 10.4 percentage points above the state average. This represents an increase from the previous year's rate of 92.7 percent. Lakeville DECA Students achieved greatness at State with 13 qualifying for International Conference. 135 of our students from Lakeville North High School and Lakeville South High School DECA teams competed at the 2024 Minnesota DECA State Career Development Conference in Minneapolis on March 10th through 12th. Several of our students from both teams competed in the finals, with 13 of our students earning top rankings and qualifying for the International Career Development Conference, ICDC. Congratulations to those Lakeville DECA students. Our Speech Students also excelled at State Tournament. Our students from Lakeville North High School and Lakeville South High School Speech Teams achieved success at the 2024 Class AA Speech Tournament on April 19th through 20th at Chalkabye High School. Lakeville North Speech Team took fifth place overall as a team with four students meddling in the finals. Two of our Lakeville Area students qualify for Team USA. Congratulations to Adelaide Madlasek, a 7th grader at Century Middle School, and Sidney Madlasek, a 5th grader at Lakeview Elementary, on qualifying in the inaugural World Martial Arts Committee, WMAC Team USA members. The two will travel to Cincinnati, Ohio to compete in their respective age and belt divisions at the National Qualifier Tournament. And actually, I think they did that last weekend. So congratulations to them. Lakeville Guard competes on the world stage. Congratulations to our Lakeville Winter Guard Varsity Team on rounding off an incredible season. They took the world stage with their first appearance at the Winter Guard International, WGI, World Championships on April 12th in Dayton, Ohio. That team has a solid first performance on the world stage and placed 24th overall. Congratulations to all of our recognitions this month. And if you want to read more about the great things that happened in our district, go to ISD194.org/news.
All right, thank you very much for that update, Dr. Van Zyle. We'll move on to Board Communications. At our Stakeholders Session last month, we had three people engage with the board discussing negotiations. For public comment tonight, we had nine people talking about negotiations and also special education programming. The last update that we have for Board Communications tonight, the board met in closed session on Tuesday, March 26th, to evaluate the performance of Superintendent Dr. Van Zyle. The board received an update from Dr. Van Zyle on the progress of his three-goal areas: leadership for decision-making, budget development and maintenance, and developing relationships. The board did not reach a conclusion about Dr. Van Zyle's performance at this time, as this was a check-in with the formal evaluation process to be completed in June. The board added a fourth goal to the superintendent's plan concerning communication, and will receive an update on this goal in May. The board also suggested executive coaching opportunities, which Dr. Van Zyle is exploring. All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Okay. Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? You need to use your microphone.
I'll make the motion.
So we have a motion by Director David Anderson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Shin Lee. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Director Kelleher. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Carley Anderson. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, so we'll move on down to reports, and we have an update about High View Elementary.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, Superintendent Van Zyle. Okay, tonight, we are giving you an update on our brand-new elementary building that's going to come online here this fall. And tonight, I have Von Dirks from Wold Architect, Sean Kelly from Wold Architect, I have Will Forbord from Loffler, and Cameron Dollar. So I'm going to have them to come up and do the presentation, but they'll go over the highlights of this building, and it's really turned out to be quite the building. Really excited to get it open for our students.
Hello? Make sure I speak loud enough into that. Thank you for having us. We're excited to be here tonight. This has been, if we really go back on this process, this goes back to 2016 and earlier, because we've been working with the district for a long time in long-range planning and looking at what are the steps to take as you reach capacity in the buildings? Where do you do additions? When is it time to look at new elementary schools? And that's really where this developed and came from. Next slide. As we were introduced, my name is Von Dirks. I'm one of the partners with Wold Architects and Engineers. Sean Kelly has been leading our team in our office, which has at times been as large as 20 different people. Will?
Will Forbord with Loffler Construction and Consulting.
So we have a little planning process update slide there. Really, this started, as I said, in 2016, but around summer of 2020, started talking with Director Holmgren on the fact that we were going to have to look at doing something, and started really working on pre-design in October of 2020. What that involved was working with not only district administration and staff in looking at this process, but also Loffler touring lots of different elementary schools to determine what do you want this new elementary school to include, how are we looking at special education spaces, and really putting together all the programs and pieces that were needed to be able to submit the review and comment to the Department of Education. That went forward with board approval in January of 2021. Review and comment went into the state, and obviously, successful referenda in May of 2021. And that is when the design process started in earnest. And next slide, please. As I want to remind you, that's for 100,000-square-foot elementary school. Five different sections, meaning five sections of grades kindergarten through first, and four sections, second through fifth in the building. We have center-based special education as part of that and the specialists. We started over the summer with a core plan group that included not only staff, but also community members, parents as part of that process, where we developed criteria with them moving forward. As we hit the fall, we went into design development, where we went from two-dimensional to three-dimensional. And then our team worked on it from December into the bidding season on construction documents with bidding in spring of 2022, and really starting that construction process at that point. Next slide. As I mentioned, this was a process that we worked extensively with the district staff to make sure that we had all the district standards in place, really looking at this as a new prototype for an elementary school that could be repeated as you've done with other buildings in the past. It has the ability to expand, but most importantly, it's built on the criteria of the people that were involved in that process. It's not about us as designers, it's about you and what you wanted to do. And I do want to stress, because the design process was a long time ago, we really want to make sure that we've got quality construction documents as part of that, because you don't want to be looking at change orders. And I've worked with the district since 1994, so 30 years. This is the lowest percentage change order project we've ever done with the district. So you're in good shape for this project, and that's a good opportunity for me to turn it over to Will to talk about construction.
Thanks, Von, and thanks for your help and Sean with Wold, as well as Joe Patton with Wold for their effort. We'll take the next slide. A little bit more about Loffler. We're based here in Lakeville and served as the district's construction manager since 2016 with the additions at Cherry View. I'm a Lakeville resident, proud parent of two Lakeview Elementary School students with a four-year-old that'll be joining the school here pretty shortly. In addition to our construction management services, we also serve as an owner's representative and cost consultant with a variety of different public entities in the upper Midwest. We track costs for all sorts of different building types, including the K-12 sector pretty closely. Slide. Based in Lakeville, we're very interested and invested in the success of the community, and successful schools have a positive impact for all of us. Our role, Von mentioned, we started with assisting with the referendum planning, and we continued to work for the school district at no cost after it passed until about the midpoint of the design process, making sure we were all on the right track with value engineering and planning for construction. I was still on that last one there. There you go. Many of you were present for the groundbreaking July 2022, and a lot has happened since we were last in front of you about a year ago. No news is good news in construction, and we didn't have to come back since last April till now to report that. We're all pretty much done. When I say a lot, I do mean a lot. We had over 105,000 labor hours on the project. It was really great to host a few of you on tours, to show progress off along the way, and we received our temporary occupancy a few weeks ahead of schedule last month. Now, I'll take the next one. We are just continuing a couple of minor items here, finishing our punch list with the trade contractors. The building is ready to move into with a few seasonal items like paving and commissioning the air conditioning system scheduled for this week and next. Paving will take place tomorrow. Planning on leaving the construction fence up until midsummer to allow that turf to establish, so the school and the fields and all that is ready for the students next fall. Next slide. As I said, the school is ready, and furniture deliveries are scheduled for July, excuse me. After July, faculty will move in in August, and then we will be ready for the first day of school in September. Financial update on the project. Last time we were here, we were tracking a budget of about $50.4 million all in for the entire cost of the facility, and our estimated cost at completion is just under $49.9 million. The billing is 99% complete. For the trade contractors, like Von mentioned, the change orders were in line with expectations and planned for, and no big surprises along the way. We have begun the process of releasing retention, which is 5% that's held on the trade contractors for completion of punch lists and submitting all their closeout and warranty items. So as we get all the completed information, we start to release those dollars out to the trade contractors. A few new items that have come up to complete. The project team discussed and considered it quite extensively on adding an additional pathway along the bus loop to make sure that it's a safe place for pedestrians should they take a shortcut from 185th to the bus entrance. We definitely do not want buses and pedestrians mixing, and at certain times of the day, people coming off of 185th taking a shortcut to the door would be tempted to take that bus lane. So we wanted to do something there with some of the additional contingency dollars in the project. We're also looking at compiling costs for the gym acoustic baffles with the storm shelter in there, and concrete walls and concrete roof and a hard floor, it reverbs a little bit, and we're exploring some cost options to make that a little bit more of an enjoyable space. So there's where Wold started us off in the top right, and that's what it looks like a few weeks ago. It's difficult to tell which one's real and which one's not, but we can move through these. Just missing some furniture in the cafeteria. Classroom. And I wanted to finish with a thank you to district staff that helped along the way. They're great partners, always there, invested in success. Again, the Wold team that I mentioned, our project manager Cameron, site superintendent Conrad, and our project engineer Vince Johnson all did a lot of work planning for this to succeed, and that work makes it happen. So those guys did a fantastic job, and I really wanted to acknowledge that. And then thank all of you for your continued partnership, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Stand for questions.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done with that. We've had a chance as a board to tour the building, and we liked some of the additions and kind of the new things that we saw, and we're excited to see that building filled with students. Do any other board members have questions or comments? Director Thompson?
Yeah, can you share with me just a little bit of some of the security protocols that are part of the school? I know that obviously with Lakeville North and South, we've got those, what do we have at this element?
Don't tell all the secrets.
Right, right, so.
No, I think probably the best way to describe that is, in 2018, I believe it was, in that referenda, there was a large security measure, and we worked with your security consultant to look at how we would implement those security processes through all the different buildings. A lot of those were retrofit. This new one, we had the opportunity to incorporate all of those security standards from the start, and so it does include everything that you've worked on as a district over the last decade.
So needless to say, all of our schools are secure?
Correct.
With high levels of security.
That is correct.
But they don't look like it at all.
No, the goal is to make sure that you have the best learning environments possible, while at the same time keeping everyone inside the building safe.
I would have to say I was pretty impressed on the tour of your thoughtfulness for the special ed classrooms and kids, and especially having a special ed student myself, I think you guys did a great job on that.
Thank you.
I'll just add that I had the opportunity to tour it two different times, and the progress between time one and time two, and just the ultimate product. I think our High View families and staff are going to be so pleased. It's wonderful.
Any other comments? All right, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
We now have the fiscal year '24 budget update. Mr. Holmgren.
Good evening again. Yes, we thought it very prudent to just talk a little bit about our budget, especially our revenue budget, as there seems to be so much confusion in the community, even across the state, of what we actually received as new money and what is maybe not available as for new programming. Next slide, please. This is a report that we received from the state of Minnesota. I know it's very small, but I just wanted you to see that I'm pulling the numbers from the information that we got from the state of Minnesota. You can see the data on there, it's 516, so it's right at the end of the session. This is what we received for our new dollars. So now, we go to the next slide, you can see it a little better. I kind of broke it down, so you can see. So in our basic, which is our formula lounge, on the report indicated $3.6 million in new funding in the first year, and about $2 million in the second. We did see some increases in our compensatory aid of $100,000 the first year, and $50,000 the second. English learner, this was nice to see some increases here, as this is another area of our budget that definitely is short on a yearly basis. It's really our new subsidy that we're seeing is really with our English learner students. Opera and Cal, we got some new money for menstrual products. We had to put them in every single building with any student, 4th grade and older. Transportation, we received a little more funding there directly for our transportation, so six in the first year, four in the second. Fairbald School, here is where we helped pay for that. You'll see they're taking some funds from us to give to Fairbald, the deaf and blind school there. And then we have the Special Ed Cross subsidy, which was the big news over the last legislative session, at the $6.2 million. Small increase the second. Well, we get the same amount next year, just the increase is only 233. Yeah. So I'm showing up here is the increases in each year, okay? Moving on to the second page. Now, these are all definitely restricted dollars that we received from the state of Minnesota, new program areas. So we received some library aid, American Indian aid, and the student support staff aid. These had to be new employees. And ECFE got a few dollars. You see, we're getting four and a quarter in the year that we're in, and about $140,000 next year. So just to put it into more of a summary form, you can see here, for general education, then, when we take the restricted away, it's 3.9, special education at 6.2, and of course, our restricted, new restricted dollars at 4.26, with a total of the $10.6 million in new funding from the state of Minnesota for our school district, and 2.3 in the second year. The reason I'm bringing this up is, of course, we are seeing growth in our enrollment each year. We're still seeing it. This year, it has slowed a little bit when we looked at what's happened with our interest rates, and housing has slowed down a little bit. So instead of 200 students this year, we have about 168, so we saw a small decrease there. But the reason I want to talk about this is, in the increases we got from the state of Minnesota, they include these increases in enrollment. We give the state of Minnesota what we think we're going to have as enrollment for the next three years as estimates. So these numbers are given to the state of Minnesota. Next slide, please. So what I want to point out is, in that increase, or in the new increase from the state of Minnesota, part of that increase is because we have more students. It's not new revenue. So that $1 million comes from 168 students, and that has to be, not has to be, but it needs to be used for our new staffing for this year, for any new teachers that we need to bring on hand in order to support those brand-new students. Okay, next slide, please. So when we pull that out, you can see then for our general education, new money in the fiscal '24 year. fiscal 24 year, $2.5 million, along with 6.2 from special education, showing giving us $8.8 million of new money in this fiscal year and for next year, 1.6. And, you know, everybody said, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, 10 million, tell million, you told us you got 17 million. Well, we did get 17 million, okay? But that's what I want to show here. The 17 million is here, you'll see the bottom there, 17.3 million, but only half of this is new money. The rest of it is all increases to our restricted areas. So you see the first three lines are what we just talked about. So we had our under sign at 8.8, our new new money for new students at 1, 1 million and restricted at 7.55. Other increases we're seeing in this year that are restricted, staff development at 70,000, our Q comp at 52,000, and just to point out here, Q comp at this point too doesn't give us enough to even cover the programming for Q comp. We are short at 300,000 on a yearly basis. Our unemployment, as you know, it is funded in this year, so we have to account for that. So a million of that increase is unemployment funds that we're collecting to pay the unemployment for our summer unemployment employees. Now, in compensatory, this is an area we thought we really were going to lose some money, but it's new funding from compensatory that's here, $2 million and our literacy aid. Endowment.
Is that included in that?
No, there's there's nothing, we'll talk about that in a second, but there is nothing here listed yet for any of the unfunded mandates, except for the unemployment. Okay, the endowment, what this is, it's endowment from the state of Minnesota, but what it does is it replaces or it it comes in place of levy dollars. So that $105,000 is actually levy dollars that just come through the general fund. And then under special ed here, you see we have some increases, other increases in special ed. The majority of this is tuition funding for our tuition kids that go to other students, including District 917. This used to all come in federal federal funds, but is now flowing through the general fund. So it looks like a huge increase, but it's just a switch from where it's coming from. LTFM, we're seeing about 54,000 new in aid this year. As you know, we're doing doing a lot of solar work on our buildings, putting in solar arrays. We have grants of $306,000 this year to pay for those or to help pay for those solar arrays. And in District 917, they also get the student support dollars, but that flows through us. So there's $40,000 that comes to us and then we, of course, push it off to District 917. LEP is another area. We talked about that earlier, that we are short there, but so we had a nice increase with some new funding, but going directly to LEP programming. So that brings us to the 17.3. So really, the point of this talk is just to really show that even though we got 17 million, we really only have 8.8 in total new funding from the state of Minnesota. And of course, a big piece that is just, we usually get 2%, so we got 4% this next this year instead. So yes, it is an increase and it is available for programming for our students going forward. And here, just just to recap, this is the budget that we have in place that I brought to you back in February. You can see now that our expenditures in our general fund are up to 197 million, a lot of funds flowing through our district. We're seeing a change in our fund balance there of 2.8 million. It's a little over 1%. As you know, we're down a little under 1% in our fund balance. This pushes up to about 2%, so a small increase, but we have a ways to go to get back to five, which is school board policy. Student nutrition fund, you see an increase there of just under 500,000, very healthy fund balance. It's almost to the limit over the state is not going to let us have any larger amount than that, but that's really due to the the free program now. We actually are getting more funding for the free kids than we were collecting with kids who paid. So that's what's happening there. Community education, as you know, their fund balance really got hammered down during COVID and they have a negative balance there of 413. So they're slowly coming back, expecting an increase of about 100. It should be a little bit more than that, but we'll be they'll be coming out of the hole soon. Our building fund, of course, all the funds flow through there for our new building, any type of construction that we're doing, including all our LTFM that's bonded. So you can see we did that bonding last fall of $23 million for LTFM. You see there is under financing sources, but between the building and the LTFM going on this year, we're spending about $23 million on our buildings, leaving us a pretty healthy fund balance still to work for next year. Debt service, again, the only thing that runs through debt service fund is what we pay on our bonds. So that's all we levy for and we've talked about this when we talk about the levy, that the school district can actually levy 105% just in case we have homeowners or property owners that don't pay all their taxes, then we always have enough to make our payments. But what happens is we really don't need 105%. So it builds up over time and you can see that change in fund balance, a negative million, that that's million dollars that actually is going back to the taxpayers because we don't need those funds. Our trust fund is our scholarships. These are the permanent funds that come in and we just, that $15,000 goes out to scholarships. Of course, we have many other donations during the year for scholarships, but this is just what comes off of those permanent funds. And then our internal service fund, that is our.
You may want to clarify that one comment as far as the debt service, because debt service, it's not like we couldn't use the money, but you can only use it in certain areas.
Sure, yeah, let's go back to that for a second. Yes, debt service, the only thing that can happen in debt service is debt service. So only payments on our bonds, okay? So as we levy 105%, that that fund balance builds up a little bit. So about every year, we give a portion back back to the taxpayer because we can't use it anywhere else. We can't move anything here. Student nutrition on down, none of those funds can be used in the general fund. The general fund can always help those other funds, but not the other way around. The last line there, the internal service fund is our is our health plan, it's our dental plan, and we were self-funded here starting four years ago. You can see that that the fund balance has built up now to 6.7%. We're really looking to try to get up to the 5% of our total expend before we really can look at trying to curb some of our costs. But at the same time, the increases that we're seeing the last last couple of years is less than we were seeing just three and four years ago. We were seeing eight and nine percent increases, now we're looking at five. So this has been very beneficial for the school district and our employees. So here, just to just to take a look at our fund balance, you can see it's we've turned the corner and they're coming back up. Again, this is the same information that we presented back in February. So with that, is there any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
I maybe have one question, sorry.
That's right, Director Carly Anderson.
Can you just speak to something we've talked about as a board that I think it might be helpful to understand? When you're talking about some of the mandates that we don't know about yet and just our financial position, can you speak to that?
Yes, I guess I am concerned about the unfunded mandates that are out there because we don't have any hard numbers and it's very frustrating to try to plan and let people know, our staff, our community, what's going on with those unfunded mandates. The three, well, there's four big bigger ones. First of all, we have the REED Act. We know that the state of Minnesota is going to reimburse part of that. We know there's $34 million statewide to help cover that cost. And we know in the, what we've done for next year is done some adjustments to our calendar so that we're being able to do the training needed for our elementary teachers so that we don't have that cost directly, but we still have the, there's a cost of $630 per teacher to do that training. We also have to put a new employee on this next year.
Is that 34 million for the whole state?
The entire state, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it's so it's not going to be enough to cover and we don't know how much we're going to get yet. We're hoping that's come soon, but we are building costs into next year's budget because of the things that are we have to do. The second one, of course, that we've talked about many, many times, and that is the summer unemployment. We're looking at spending approximately $1 million this year, but we are going to be reimbursed for those dollars. We expect fiscal '25 to also, the state will have enough to cover that cost for fiscal '25. But after that point, we we don't know. We have no guarantee. I know there's legislation in place right now to extend that, make it permanent, but of course, we don't have any type of response from the state legislature yet.
I was just going to say, I think one thing that we've been talking about is it's not necessarily unfunded, but unclear in terms of what's going to happen with legislation on some of these things. There are some things we just don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we could get more, but we just don't know. The other, I know a piece that's.
Not to put you on the spot, but this has been going on a long time, so the legislators, this has been going on a long time, so the legislators need to get it in gear.
Well, I would agree that the legislature, if the legislature is going to put in place an unemployment for our summer employees who don't work, they should fund that. I mean, absolutely. So at this point, they've they put a dollar aside, but at this point, and when it's used up, it's gone. And then it comes our liability going forward. We have also a paid leave act for employees that don't have paid leave. Most of our employees have leave, we have sick leave, we have leaves available to them that they can use, but there's a lot of employees across the state that don't. So there is going to be a new a new program starting up in the January of '25 where we start collecting funds ourself, just just like how FICA, you we pay half, the employee pays half. That's what's going to happen with this at a 0.35. So it's $350,000 for us, so 175 next year, an increase of 175 the second year, and that'll be there. I don't foresee it going away. There's no talk about funding that. So that's a cost of $300,000 per year forever and it'll grow as our, of course, as our total pay and wages grows. The other last piece is is the safe, the safe.
Safe in sick time.
Yeah, safe in sick time. That just started here this past January and that goes to any of our employees that don't get any type of sick sick time. So if they're part-time, they're and they're not, they're not eligible for some of the sick time that we're, we now we have to give that to them, which which we are, but there's a cost involved and there's there's no funding of that also. Of course, we don't know what that cost is, we're just kind of working through it, but it's going to be at least $150,000 we see in the in this year. So those are the four big ones that we're very concerned about. The REED Act, we really don't know what that's going to cost and a 34 million is not going to go very far.
Correct, because we're only going to get a very small percentage.
There's 400 school districts in the state of Minnesota.
So question with these unfunded or underfunded mandates, however you want to say it, if there's something that like we don't have the funding for, is is that something that you would pull then from the unassigned fund balance to cover so then, you know, because otherwise, like, we wouldn't have the money?
Yeah, that'll be the first place it goes. Once we realize or find out or learn what that is, yes, that's the first place it comes out of. So if our fund balance, you know, starts to fall again, I mean, we're right back to doing cuts again.
Okay. Director Thompson?
Yeah, so for for folks that are probably watching or looking at this graph here, they're seeing this red line that's declining quite a bit over the past five years. And so when I'm looking at the 2019 budget, our expenditures were about, what, 143 million? We brought in 140, but at that time, I'm looking at the the financial budget on the website, we had about $20 million in our savings account, also known as our unassigned balance. And so, and that was 2019, you know, prior to COVID. And so as the years progressed, the fund balance now, just to make sure that I understand, while it is, it does say 2%, we had $1 million as of last year, is that in in July? And so technically, the state, our policies state that we should have 5% in our savings account and 5% of our expenditures. And we spent, if I'm looking at your fiscal year 2023, we spent $192 million last year to run our operations. And so we should have roughly $19 million in our savings account, but we only had $1 million at the end of the school year, is is my understanding. Is that correct?
Yes, if you if you want, if you want a, where your policy is is at, that should be at 5, 5%,
Yes, yeah.
Then that's at 100, that's at 10 million.
At 10 million, we should, we should be at 10 million at a at a minimum, but ideally, you generally want roughly 10%, which is roughly three months of your monthly expenditures, which is our our district burns about $7 million a month is what I was what I calculated. So end of last year, we had $1 million in our savings account. We should have roughly 5%, which is $10 million. And then for fiscal year '24, at the end of this school year, we're projected to have how much in our savings account?
About $4 million.
About $4 million.
So 2%.
So if our expenditures are 197, ideally, we should have roughly 20 million, 10%, I mean, sorry, 5% of that should be obviously 10 million, but we're we're way short by $6 million is what I'm seeing.
Yes, it's going to.
In regards to the fund balance.
It's going to take time to crawl out of that negative position that we're in when we talk about our fund balance. You can see if we're moving at one and one, one and a half percent, almost, well, 1.3% is really what we're moving. It's going to take four or five years for us to get up.
So what happens when we don't have money in our saves account?
Well, if if it goes negative, like if we go below zero, then there's something called statutory operating debt. If you fall below 2% in statutory operating debt, that's when the state of Minnesota will step in and tell you how to program your school.
Okay, so with, so with last year being $192 million in expenditures, obviously, our unassigned balance continued to drop from 22 to 23. Why is that the case?
I think I can just take, give you some, just some general information here when we talk about our budget and some of the reasons that it's it went down. If you remember when pandemic started way back in '20, fiscal year '20, we were looking at many, many supports for our students and at that time, the board decided, yes, we're going to give the supports that are needed for those students. And there was quite a few, there was quite a bit of support that was hired at that time for our students. On the front end of this, if you look back in '21, we didn't fall very far yet, but that's because we had a lot of money that came from the federal government to help with the pandemic. So when we went into the second year, we didn't have the funds from the state adminis, from the federal government, but we still had all the supports, all the staffing that we had put in place. And that's the biggest reason that that came down, okay? Now, when we got to '23, there were some other, there were some other things we saw happening. We had some transportation increases that we didn't anticipate. We also had a lot of subcosts. We had many, many, many staff that were out for long periods of time and and we spent, like, I think it was $2 million more in subs than we anticipated. So that was a huge, huge change in '23. So that's why last spring, I let you know that we had to make some cuts because we had to stop that declining declining fund balance and that's what we did.
Dr. Van Zyl.
You may also want to touch base. One of the things that I remember sharing as I was coming on board or you sharing with me is that there was a decline in the number of students, a couple hundred students and how that impacted us.
Yeah, I suppose you can't go back. If you look at our enrollment, in the year of '21, we had a decline. Yeah, can you go back about two more? Probably right there, one more. Anyway, you can, it's very obvious, you see the change in that projection of that graph. It dropped. And that was a $2 million loss in our in our revenues on those students that were not there. So as we went forward, we had more students, but we're still that $2 million less all along than where we were when when the pandemic started.
So essentially, you have to pay back for the students that you lose, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember that the levy, the levy we put in place every year is we always have to project ahead, but we don't get paid for two years behind. So when this happened, two years later, now we have to give that $2 million back and that's exactly what happened in '23.
Director Carly Anderson?
One more question. So as I was looking over at over the numbers again, and I tried to send this to you in advance, but, you know, as I was looking at kind of the change from 2019 to 2023 in terms of revenue and expenditures, there is a big change going from, I think Brian said 143 to 197 in terms of our expenditures. And so when I was looking at kind of, it's it's hard to understand exactly where all that money is in the different pots, but the the two areas that I saw were kind of all the staff salaries related to the increases across the years, which makes sense. But then a big thing that I still am trying to grapple with is the instructional supports, which went from $7 million to something like $26 million. It's a huge change. And so when you talk about supports with COVID, like what, can you help me understand what is in that category?
Yeah, that's if. Yeah, that's, if, if we have employees come in to work with our students, and they're not teaching, right, they sit in that support area. So for example, you know, another area that, not in the classroom, like, our media people, they're in that area, right? All of our deans are in that area, okay? But anybody we brought in as support also sits in that, in that area, as a pupil support. I mean, I mean...
What, what year were you talking about again?
Well, if you look, and I wish I had the packet with, but when you gave us the 24 projections, there were the different categories, and, you know, in terms of what falls under the general fund, and so there's that instructional supports category that had this huge jump, and then it's kind of been in the 20 million since. And so that's just a really significant change. So things were brought in for COVID-related reasons that just positions and things like that, that we couldn't...
Yeah, there's another, there's another big piece that fits in there, and that's all our technology. If you remember back in '19, we did a operating referendum, and part of that operating referendum was to, was to increase the staff for our, for our technology, which five new employees came out at that time, okay? Also, our capital projects levy, all the money that's spent there is also in that area. So all the devices we've been buying and replacing all sits in that area. So we've had some very large leases over the last few years to make sure that all of our, our students have a, have a device, and that also all runs through that area. That's why you're seeing it slow down a little bit this year, because we're not buying any devices this year.
I'm sorry. So what, so with the, because I know we have the specific, we had the referendum for the devices, but you're saying the devices come funded from the community for the referendum, but the, the people that come along with that funding are, that comes out of our...
That came out of the operating, I think, okay, let me back up. Back in '17, there was a capital projects levy that got put in place, four devices, four STEM, two big pieces where that money went. And the first couple of years of that, we didn't hardly touch that money, it just built up as a fund balance. And when you look back at that, you know, fund balance that was larger while back, there were some excess funds only from that sitting there, I mean, multiple millions of dollars, okay? When COVID happened, that's when we needed a device for everybody, because we're not at school, we're at home. So we spent, you know, multiple millions of dollars to put those devices in hand, and that's the line item that it fits in, both the staffing and the devices.
But the, so the money doesn't cover, like, the operating levy that was...
It covers, but it still has to show up as an expenditure on the line. So we're, the last, the last lease we, we paid for is over $5 million, well, it sits in that line.
So it's covered in the revenue, too?
So it's, it's money in, money out, is the way I would describe it. So you'd see that money come in, and you would see that expenditure.
So you're seeing on the revenue side, you're, you're seeing revenue, but you're seeing that increased, we're spending down that fund balance for, for the devices. See, if we get $5 million sitting there, okay, and we're only getting, I think, like, about $3 million on a yearly basis, but we spend eight, you know, so it's showing an increase in that cost, even though there are funds there to pay for it.
But not enough.
It's enough, we're, we're good, yeah.
That's what I'm just saying, if we, there are these big things that you see shift, and then the revenue doesn't increase to the same degree that the expenditure is.
Yeah, so it is, it is confusing when our general fund encompasses a lot of restricted dollars, but the restricted dollars, we have the revenue for. But during the last couple of years, we also have the needs that we've had, all of these restricted funds, we bought, we've, or bought, not bought, but paid down those fund balances, so they all shrunk down at the same time. When you're looking at a total fund balance, a big piece of that is our restricted funds also, fund balances coming down. This is just a one big picture with everything in it.
Do you have any more questions from board members? No? All right. Thank you, Bill, for your presentation.
Thank you.
We don't have any reports with recommended actions or additions to the agenda tonight, so our next item is the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'll be very quick. Thank you for, everybody for being here, and I'm glad we had some nice weather. You know that we're almost into May, so I would encourage you to continue to take a look at our website. There's a lot of activities taking place. I know I got an invitation to a play this weekend, several things that our students and staff are doing, so I'd encourage you to continue to take a look at that and be involved in that process as much as you can. And I know we've got another meeting to get to, so I'll just keep it short with that, unless you have any questions for me.
Looks like we don't have any questions. All right, so the board will move into closed session pursuant to Minnesota State Statute, Section 13D, Subdivision 3B, to engage in a negotiation discussion. Do I have a motion by a board member to move into closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a motion by Director Kelleher? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Carley Anderson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.